Okay, good evening, everybody. Welcome you to the regular Board of Education meeting on Monday, December fourteenth, seven twelve. I'll call the meeting to order. Our first order of business is to stand for the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay. Next is, we'll call David Olson, I don't believe he's with us yet. Jeff Redmond. Mr. Degros will not be with us tonight. Howard Kruski is here. Deanne?
Yeah.
Ryan? Here. Kirk? Here. Okay. Did I miss anybody? Good. With that, was the meeting properly notified?
Yes, it was.
And we are under audio video recording. Okay. This time, do we have any public comment? Okay, hearing none, then we will move on to our next order of business. Presentation of our German-American Virtual Exchange presentation with our high school, middle school German teacher, Ariana Wirebaugh. So, Ariana, are you with us?
Yes, I am.
Welcome.
Thank you.
War is yours.
Perfect. Hold on one second. Wonder if I can do this. Are you guys able to kind of see my screen?
Nope.
No?
Um, since you're presenting, but it just shows you.
Hmm.
Be something in settings with, uh...
Maybe, hold on.
Yeah, maybe, or...
If not, I can just do it visually or verbally too. It really doesn't matter to me.
Tim, I was able to see it a few minutes ago.
Here, I'll try it again in a quick. If not, hi, I'm Ariana Wirebaugh. I'm the German teacher up at the high school and the middle school. I teach exploratory world language seven and eight, as well as German one through four up at the high school. This is my third year at SCC. So, we completed the German-American Virtual Exchange program, which is through the Gerta Institute, is also known as GAP, but I refer to it as that, that is why. So, the GAP was the response to COVID-19 as it directly impacts the ability for us to do exchanges, which was recognized because it was completely free, so all the students were able to complete it. And then they also were kind enough to supply us with some authentic materials, as well as worksheets to get the conversation rolling. So, as I said, this was the response to COVID-19. In normal times, we would be doing the German-American Partnership Program, also known as GAP. So, we were actually able to complete this with our school or our exchange partner school, which I found last year. So, as I mentioned, all my German students up at the high school were able to complete this, so that ranges from my kiddos who started with German in September to those who are now in their fourth year of learning German up at the high school. And it was really nice to come from the projects, I was able to have the student-level appropriate projects. So, they filled out this whole like introduction, like kind of about themselves, and because of that, I was able to match them up with the German students from Luisa von Dussberg Gymnasium, which is in Kempen, Germany. It is located near Dusseldorf. Their school is about the equivalent of ours. They had students who signed up to do this in their free time, as opposed to us who did it during our class. And yeah, so after they were partnered up with their Germans, they got to kind of get to know each other through doing different activities. Some were in German, some were in English, and then to speak to their German partners for four weeks. The first week was kind of focusing on building those relationships, which was really nice because I know some of them still talk to the German partners to this day. And then they created a project, the two themes that they chose for everyday life and bullying. So, they were able to then use, in the upper level of their knowledge of German, to talk to their exchange partners about this. And I personally really liked it because it was relevant, and I think that's why the students enjoyed it as well. So, as I mentioned, two times a week, we talked in German and in English to our exchange partners. The other two days were workdays, so we did it for four weeks, end of October through beginning of November. I do have a couple of the projects. I'm not quite sure how I'd be able to share them, though. I can always, if you email me, I can always share them as well. So, like, for example, one of them was talking about your city. So, one of my seniors talked about Hammond and Roberts, and then was able to connect and show like the coolest places to go around here, their favorite places, the most historical. So, I even found out a lot about around here through that. And then her partner did the counterpart of that and was talking about Kempen and all those different areas, like her favorite place was to be by her horse in the stable, which was really cool, because her partner also rides horses. So, yeah, so the students really enjoyed it. They provided feedback for me on a form about it. They were able to start some friendships, as I mentioned. They will also be receiving certificates from the Gerta Institute, saying that they completed the program. I'm in the process of giving, getting that uploaded for them. There was a slight issue with Google Chrome not working with how they wanted it to do. And it was really just awesome because it was a real-life application for them to actually be able to use German, as opposed to just talking to me or one another. They got to speak to real-life German. Sorry if I went a little fast.
I'm curious, what's the cool, what's the coolest place to go in Hammond?
Um, well, one of them she chose, she's a junior, she chose the sign that's in her backyard. She has the "Welcome to Hammond" sign. Another one chose the, I believe we have the highest point in St. Corry County, which was really kind of cool to find out about. So, yeah, and as I mentioned, I have a bunch of the projects, so if anyone's ever interested, just shoot me an email. It's the easiest way to contact me, and I can share them.
Are there any questions for Ariana regarding the exchange program? Or any other questions regarding the German program? How are your numbers running that for the German program, Ariana?
They're growing. My first year that we were here, I believe I had nine students in my German one. This year, we started with fifteen, but are currently at fourteen.
How are, how are you handling the advanced courses? I know one of the reasons we decided to keep German rather than drop it to Spanish was there was an interest in the advanced courses, and I was one of the concerns that they couldn't keep German three, German four in high school. How are those numbers doing?
They're doing okay. Just as I said, it's been a lot of growing, especially after taking over from a teacher who had a little bit of a different teaching style than me. I believe that it'll continue to grow, especially with the fact that once we no longer have these COVID restrictions, about every other year, I plan on doing a trip over to Germany through the German-American Partnership Program, so that should help. I know that Harris, Mr. Soderbergh and I have talked about AP German in the past as Yeah, so like, we still are doing that. I'm continuously exploring different opportunities through that as well, such as I'm looking at incorporating a German films unit into it, so just some things that are a little bit higher level, more of the culture, more introduction for it. But I know that also there is the added benefit that since I teach at the middle school and the high school, that many of the middle boys are excited to see me once they get up at the high school.
Well, thank you for your hard work, and thank you for the presentation.
Great, thank you guys for having me.
Board always enjoys these presentations, so thank you very much.
Yep.
Thanks, sir.
With that, we'll move on to the next item, which are comments from board members and superintendent, starting with the SCC School Board election. Pam included the official notice of the three spots that are up for election. Mr. Degros, Deanne, and myself up for reelection this spring. I don't know if I need to say anymore at this point. Those that are wishing to file, to file papers with Pam Kettner at the district office here, paperwork can be picked up from Pam also. I don't know if there are any other comments regarding the election. I don't know if you're on Pam, if you have anything to say. Not hearing any, then we'll move on to the next item. Or any additional comments? I think we've covered things here to cover. First off, I was given a copy here of the school board survey from school perceptions. We as a board taken that many times, but we haven't taken it in the last couple of years. I think with some of the new faces, it may be worthwhile to do that. I don't know if everybody got a sheet with the contact numbers on it. Usually, we have quoted, quoted survey access numbers that you can sign in on the tool. I have one here, but I don't know if anybody else's got one, so I can, I can follow up on that with details in January if we're, have interest of taking that survey.
It's like a personality survey?
No, it's, it's more an assessment of, for a board development tool.
Oh, okay.
So, no, it's, it's, may not necessarily, you know, it's an opinion of what each board member's feelings are on probably culture and the school board and the school district, are the things that we're doing that you like, are the things that you don't like, things that you would like to see changed.
Is it just for school board members or...?
No, it's just for board members.
It's kind of a self-assessment, I believe, by key word of school boards, you know, those theories, communication, and the board typically looks at it and develops annual goals, say, all right, we're, this is kind of our biggest area for growth, let's, let's develop a plan based on that.
I think we come back, our next meeting, I believe it's January eleventh, they'll come back with more details on it. If there's interest in it, we can pursue that.
I don't have any interest in that. Somebody else does.
Why?
I don't know, I just feel like we have, like, we've got to take a survey to tell each other what we think about.
It helps us understand that one person thinks we're at this level, and somebody else thinks at this level, and there's a gap there, so let's help us understand why I think we're doing great, you don't think we're doing very well. So, that's the sort of thing that, it'll show gaps, and, you know, we know how we feel, but we don't know how each other feel, so, I mean, it's...
Well, ask me, but I'm saying, ask me, I don't know how I feel, I don't even got it.
Well, the, I mean, it takes ten minutes.
Oh, yeah, I think it's a little, it's a little squishy.
Now, if there's, if there's interest, I'll pursue it. If there's no interest, then we can move on, but I don't know what the board's opinion is.
That's my opinion.
I don't know, I don't know the data that comes out of it, so I don't, I can't really tell. I think it's, is it, I mean, is there an exhortment fee for doing it? I'm assuming it's...
No, this is a pre-survey.
Like Survey Monkey or something like that?
Like a free thing, and then...
Through school perception.
You can see how other...
If you want their analysis, it's two hundred and fifty bucks, but usually, since I am, you know, it's an anonymous survey, but I can see that the results, I usually calculated the results, and there are areas that we're in agreement for, that, 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 there's things that we need to work on, there are significant gaps between that, that we need to be alerted about, maybe generate some sort of program or process to see if we can come to an agreement or come to terms as to how we can close those gaps, so. So, that is that. I don't know if you have anything else, Pam?
Yeah, a couple of things on your table. Paulette from Community Ed, she wasn't able to be here tonight, she had a topic meeting, but I see her letter there, just kind of giving an update. She's able to secure another grant for more unicycles, and the blue, the blue sheet is the winter community ed offers. So, I'll present that.
And then, I have a question on that, or do you want to wait? Go ahead. Okay. Um, I didn't think we were allowing outside people into the school, kids from other districts into the school.
So, yeah, this was a lengthy discussion along admin. I think ninety-some percent of the kids are, are kids, but, um, yeah, because, you know, the weather, they wanted to continue it, so admin decided that we would continue unicycling specifically, not all of Community Ed, unicycling specifically for that.
Are they doing any of the protocols? Because I know I've had to, like, remind masks are required and a whole bunch of practices. Other coaches have as well, but there hasn't been any masks on, on a number of occasions.
Yeah, I can speak to that a little bit. So, Tim is correct in saying, so we kind of took it equivalently to what we're practicing for sporting events. There are two children that come from one outside district, so we took it as one outside district and our district. There is a screening, screener questionnaire that they have to fill out when they come, and it's asking about, you know, fever and all the symptoms. They sign in, both the student name and the parent name, they sign in, and then they sign out. Masks are required, so thank you for sharing that, because I will follow up and just make sure that that is happening. But yes, they are following all same protocol, wiping and sanitizing everything as they kind of go. And I've met with Paulette twice on that, so, but I, I will confirm that. Yeah. Thanks.
Anything else, Community Ed? Last item is, just wanted to congratulate Howard, the WASB school board sent a letter to Howard CCB, and it reads, "Dear Howard, congratulations on your completion of twenty years of service to our local school board. WASB is proud to recognize your dedication and commitment to the children of our district. Unfortunately, we're not able to acknowledge your service in person this year, but we are sending a plaque to your district administrator for it to be presented to you locally. Congratulations and thank you for twenty years of service." So, I have not received that plaque yet. This is dated November twentieth. What we do, we'll present that plaque. Congratulations, Howard, on his twenty-eighth of service.
Then one last thing we have touch base on is the state convention. Jeff, you've contacted Pam, and I think I clarified with Pam tonight to register myself for the convention. If anybody else is interested in attending that, it's a virtual convention this year. If you're interested in that, if you're registered, contact Pam, keep them registered for that. I believe it runs from January...
Twenty fifty-one to twenty-three or something?
Yeah.
Twenty to twenty-two.
Okay, twenty to twenty-two, twenty twenty-one. Typically, the third Wednesday of January to that Friday. If you're interested and can attend at all, please let Pam know. You're not going to be required to go to every, every course opening that they have, that would be impossible. But if you could attend even a few, that would be wonderful. So, anybody younger, I would say, please contact Pam. Are there any other comments from board members? Okay, hearing none, we'll move on. I don't, we have any special presentations of this night. Then we will move on to the financial reports. Due to the absence of our treasurer, I'll go over our treasurer's report. Bank account balances as of November thirty, twenty twenty. Citizen State Bank checking is a minus thirty-three thousand, three hundred dollars, ninety-five cents, Citizen State Money Market, twelve thousand, five hundred and thirty-five dollars, fifty cents, Citizen State Bank Money Market, one forty-six is fifty-three dollars and four cents. Citizen State Bank Money Market Suicide Prevention is nineteen thousand, one hundred seventy-one dollars and forty-four cents. The total account balances at this time of negative fifteen hundred and forty dollars and ninety-seven cents. Please note that these cash balances are not fund balances. Everybody's got it, so. Okay. And the other note is the negative balance includes checks that are being held until the loan proceeds are received. It's under the curve, so that was part of the showing by Wayne. So, with that, what do you have to do with treasurer's report? Do I have a motion to approve, Mr. Redmond? Second, Brian, vote. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye, aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is consideration of the consent agenda, which consists of approval of our meeting minutes for November sixteen meeting, approval of bi-month ago for December twenty twenty, approval of appointments and contract modifications. Luisa, Reina, Alvaro, Sky, from a five-hour to a seven-hour Level Two para, starting September first, and then two little advance on January fourth from a seven-hour to an eight-hour Level Two para. Also, approval of Mike Swenson as a middle school wrestling coach, Sunday first, and Todd, that, multiple wrestling coach, also starting September first. And approval of contract, curriculum modification request for students to enroll in full-time, part-time virtual head courses for twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one, consists of five part-time and two full-time students, a total of seven. No, I have a motion.
Close you to approve the consent agenda as presented?
Okay, the motion curves. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Jeff. Who the consent agenda is presented. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, next item on the agenda is our student enrollment report.
Yeah, I don't have any noteworthy numbers for me, pretty stable from last month, that's all I have.
Okay. Questions, comments? Okay, hearing none, then we will move on to the next item. Okay, here, key word of school board, starting with our student staff and meeting recognition.
It's a long list here, so we have Ben Holmberg, Michelle Schmidt, Catherine Renee, Alyssa Britchie, thank you for all your hard work and putting together an amazing twenty-two...
David Luthmeyer, Caitlin, Jack Carrollmeyer. For all your hard work and putting together an amazing twenty twenty virtual Veterans Day program, it is very appreciated.
Elementary school staff, thank you for your continued hard work, determination, flexibility, and grit during this twenty-twenty year quarantine and at-home learning. We see that it isn't easy, but you're doing all, but you are all doing your best for kids, and thank you for that. Next, Aiden Holmberg, Cole Becker, Dave Seiler, Mason Natto, Dale, Adam.
Carson Hinsman, Dylan Wilkie, Trent Napole, Josh Bear, Jayden Goodwin, Joel McCray, Kelsom Klym, and Jackson Pettit. Congrats on being selected to the all-conference football team. I don't, this next one, I don't...
Jonny? J-H-O-N-Y?
Johnny. It's, yeah.
Johnny.
Ecuador. Tenazaka.
Tenazaka. Jack McCray, congratulations on being the first member from SCC to be recognized as second-team all-conference player, it's great work. Katie Gostovich, Olivia Cleary, Katie Larson, Meadow Bird, Caitlin Holmgren, and Delaney Bahada, congratulations on your selection of the all-conference volleyball teams. Katie Gostovich, Katie, amazing work during the volleyball season. Congrats on being named Middle Border Conference Volleyball Player of the Year, as well as earning second-team All-State honors. Next, Carson Hinsman, Cole Becker, Mason Natto, Gabe Seiler, Jackson Pettit, congratulations on being selected for the twenty-twenty All-Regional Football Team. Gabe Seiler, congratulations on being named the Middle Border Football Player of the Year. And Brad Holzer, last but not least, Brad, congratulations on your two-hundred dual-win meet. The time, perseverance, and dedication needed to achieve this level of success is extraordinary. Thank you for all of your dedication to your athletes, this district, and the sport of wrestling. Thank you to all.
Thank you, Brian. And thank you to all those who submitted those, and congratulations to those who were recognized. Quite an accomplishment, quite a list, so, thank you much for your hard work, and thank you to those who submitted those names. Okay, with that, we'll move on to the next page on the agenda, which is discussion of our future district needs and priorities. We've had our third community meeting tonight, and I don't know, can we start with summing up what we were discussing?
Yeah, so, the first two meetings were focused on identifying needs, and these last two meetings were focused on identifying solutions. So, Brian Brewer, our company presented some financial things, how we were set up, and then some scenarios with the tax impacts of, number one, the operational referendum, and secondly, twenty million dollars is the scenario presented, not necessarily going to be where it would end up if we move forward, but got to start somewhere, so the impact of a twenty million dollar capital improvements referendum, we're calling it question one for operational, question two for capital. And then, secondly, Craig Stranethin from SiteLogic presented some possible solutions. He came up with a list of kind of a lot of the things we heard, and then the three priorities, the three, my words, big rocks, of the 4K addition to the elementary, CTE addition at the high school, and then athletic, and parking slash... and then athletic and parking slash traffic improvements at the high school. And lastly, a late addition that's been identified as a need, working with Greg Green and Terry Freeze, is our HVAC system. The middle school current operating system for HVAC is not supported anymore. It's obsolete, which presents obviously maintenance, maintenance problems, and at the high school as well, there's some issues very similar. And then those two combined with a small upgrade at the elementary. Currently, in a very rough estimate, SiteLogic would like to run that. But according to Terry's estimates, one point six million dollars for HVAC. As you know, many building projects, that's always a pretty spiky portion of it. But again, being obsolete, air quality, things like that, has been identified, at least at this point, as a problem, so that was kind of a late addition. So those are added and introduced tonight. Groups shared some feedback, there's some great things. They want some more data perhaps with, you know, things like teacher retention, how many, our teacher turnover in the last, you know, five to ten years, what our current tax base is for some perspectives compared to the other twelve districts. And then, whatever, programming, lots of things. So Joe and team will compile that, we'll get to work on refining plans with SiteLogic, defining perhaps the financial tax impacts with Brian and Baird, and then refine and getting some added information from the administration and such to share at the next meeting. So that would be January eleventh. And again, as a reminder, if this board decides to pursue a referendum in April, we need to pass a resolution. Second board meeting, January, it's January twenty-fifth. Let's kind of wrap that. I also have, the postcards have went out, asking the community to go to every box holder, inviting them to do a survey. And when I learned from the last referendum, you know, there's the inclusive and kind of an exclusive method. There's this method where, you know, companies call certain individuals and give a wide variety to supposedly somehow, yeah, my scope of understanding, but get a good perspective of all stakeholders and demographics. That worked really well last time, that's more exclusive. This method is more inclusive for, say, getting to everybody and hoping that they provide honest and accurate input. But again, through Joe's experience, that method works very well also. So that postcard is in the printers, we get it, we'll get it any day, and it'll go out to every box holder. So the survey has to be ready in the next twenty-four, forty-eight, seventy-two hours, so it's ready. So with that said, based on latest information, Joe presented the rough draft of the survey. It won't look like, it won't look like this, and I should present every one more option as well. This is just captured in a, captured in an Word document, but kind of a welcome page, so to speak, from the board. And it gives us some demographic information, like age, where you reside, and then we do need, for instance, like this, where you reside. We could drill down, obviously, people resided more than just the village of Henry and Roberts. There are many municipalities, so we'll break it down by municipality. How long have you lived in a school district, et cetera, children, what school ages they are, so. I don't know if I have any question. Again, this kind of, Joe has obviously a reason for every one of his questions, but looking for your input if you see anything on there that jumps out. So I will share this board and administration tomorrow, gather your inputs. So this is just kind of a, just a brief FYI. And I don't intend to take up valuable time going through this question by question. But then it gives into kind of the, you know, the two questions, drills down to, here's one, educator compensation, things like that, and then we'll get into some building needs more specific. So it's kind of twofold, it's informational, because you, right, you need information to make an informed decision. But then, and also you got these demographics, and then folks' opinions, and should be able to gather the level of support for potential referendum at this point.
So my question, that's what you emailed out earlier today, right? So my question when I read that was, is this truly a survey? Where we're trying to get information, or is this a marketing piece? Where we're trying to push what we want and do it in a way that doesn't look like it's.
No, I'd say, I mean, I mean, it's.
I mean, this is what I was reading, I was thinking the word choice could be objective or persuasive. And I didn't know where, where this was trying to go. Or, or like I said, what we were gonna do with the stuff we got back, given the timeline.
So, yeah, I would say it's a little of both, but it primarily is meant to gather data and that. But again, they gotta have some information, because some people are clueless, right? So, and again, Joe might be able to answer that better than I. Whether it's meant intended to be persuasive, or it just ended up being that unintentionally. But, yeah, then we gotta gather this data, he's gonna get to work as soon as it closes. And intentionally, right now, planning on leaving it open until the week before that twenty-fifth board meeting, and then taking that, and then bringing, I'm sorry, this is a little, before the eleventh board meeting. I think we had it closing on like the third, sixth, give us all five days to turn around, present that in a consumable fashion at that eleventh board meeting.
Isn't that great? Having never gone through this before. To me, I feel like this is very condensed and rushed, this whole process. Just feeling, I get that feeling, like everything's like, you've got these deadlines, and you're gonna hit them, and you don't have any time to digest anything. And is that the way it always is, or did something happen, or, I don't know, that's.
I can share my opinion. I want to be honest, starting with.
Yeah, and that can be true.
I can give my thoughts too.
Or it was a war.
I do believe this one's more condensed. COVID thing in the spring, it kind of put everything on hold and.
So was this long-term planned, and then COVID happened, and then it got, okay, so this one?
Yeah.
We had this was on the.
We've been talking about this for three years.
Okay.
Since, since we announced the teachers that we were hoping to move to a hundred and ten percent, and that that would require a referendum. Teachers were all pissed off and yelled at me when we didn't do it a year ago. And we said, no, you know, realistically, the earliest we can do it is in the spring of two thousand twenty-one. And we were working towards that, and then COVID happened, so we really didn't start it till summer.
Okay, so that's.
And I think the appropriate attention of administration was getting kids educated in the spring when, you know, the world, every day was changing. So I, I don't like it, but I hear you, it is rushed.
The compensation, planning, you know, like, let's do something different, was about three years ago. And then the actual rolling it out to the staff was a May, it was May, so a year and a half ago. We're saying, hey, this is something we're considering. And then the facility, then it was like, oh, we gotta consider everything more than this compensation, and that's, things kind of got put on hold. So, I mean, the real legwork regarding this, yeah. I mean, hasn't it gone on three years, I don't want to put people wrong information there either. Compensation part, we've been working on something for three years, but it really only came to fruition a year and a half, two years ago. And then the facilities thing has been much more recent. So, yeah, I would agree, it is rushed more than usual. Joe worked a lot of schools' referendums, he says we're at where a lot of people would be at in a year and a half. Says we're, he feels good about where we're at, but, yeah, my personal opinion, it does feel rushed, most certainly.
I guess part of, part of the concern with the deadline is the end. Some of this is driven by state statutes. We used to be able to call a special election at any time. Generally, we would hold it on general elections. But by state law, now we have to hold a referendum on a general election, regularly scheduled general election. So if we miss it this spring, we are not able to bring it up until following spring, because there is no follow-up election this year. So that's, that's part of the, that's part of why it's in progress.
Can I share your rush? You know, in the past, when we've done building stuff, we've had all kinds of community input. Before, we'd get somebody back and say, hey, let's do this and this. And so there was, I think, more buy-in, that it wasn't some designer's idea, it was the community's idea. Of, hey, four-k is a critical need. Athletic fields are a critical need, and there's been some filtering of that before. I was surprised that he said, you know, after referendum passed, it takes a year to design this. Well, in the past, we've had those designs done. So as soon as referendum passed, we're pretty much ready to go. And, you know, we can make a decision if we start designing and spending money before the referendum, but I was surprised to hear that. But part of it is, you know, these are concepts, but there's no, you know, we, typically, the community and teachers admin are pretty involved in the details of what it looks like, and the capabilities, lots of tweaking. So I hear, I mean, it is. But these people are really good at saying, we can build this for twenty million, and we can build this for twenty-six million. And, you know, when we did the last one, you know, after Byron told us it was, you know, twenty-four million or whatever the number was, and they said, oh, this is gonna be, you know, four million dollars more. It's like, no, no. You said you'd do it for twenty-four million, so you make it work. And there was a lot of consternation, but we got them to build what they promised for twenty-four million bucks, because they were the one that guessed that we could build it. Hey, we only got twenty-four million dollars, we don't get to manufacture it. So I, I hear you, it's rushed, but if we don't rush it, we're at least a year on.
We had this conversation on June-ish, June, July, and I was just, should we proceed? The board was out, and I said, yeah, let's, let's proceed. Proceeding doesn't cost us anything, it's, it's no, you know, no risk, so to speak. So, I mean, we're still at that, no risk, no commitment. It's like, if we never get started, we're never gonna get started. So, you know, if this brings us up to the, we get information, 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 the surveys, more information, and then ultimately, board decides, like, now's not the time to still have that, that option.
And we'll have to fully understand the consequences of a failed referendum, right? Because it will impact the district negatively if we feel that the support isn't there, we'll have to make a decision.
Well, and that's what I, I think I heard you correctly, that we are gonna be required to vote whether we want to put this referendum on the second meeting in January. And like, we're still getting community input, and it's December. And I just, I just feel a lot of pressure from that. When you said that, I was like, oh my gosh, that's a lot of pressure.
Yep.
See, for the reason you said, I feel referendum would be.
So is there a?
Like, my kids say, like, you know, do it nice or do it twice. So, you know, like, you want to do it right. So you only do it once.
So is there, so this, this inclusive way we're doing it versus the exclusive, is there some date and time where we'll know if we have like a critical mass to make the inclusive work or not work statistically representative of that sampling of the various groups?
Like, how many people do we need to get?
Well, if it's not looking good, December twenty-ninth or whatever day. Because you need time to respond with the exclusive, right? Like, how long does that take? Or are we all in on this inclusive, and that's the only option for data based on our timeline?
Yeah, I, I, I'd rather I consult with the Donovan group and their experience. What's, what's, yeah, a statistically valid number of responses? And then if we don't get that, what's a, what's a method of whatever, going door to door or something?
It's the way they answer that, right? So you have like an enthusiasm question on there, and some of those are enthusiasm questions, are weighted differently. Like, if people aren't honest on that, that can swing that thing quickly with those enthusiasm, like, how likely are you to recommend, right? You're super enthusiastic about the district or not. And we just went through a whole deal where polls weren't very accurate. And that, that's one of the big ones, right? Is people give you an opposite answer on that one question, and that swings polls like five to seven percent. So.
And I do think that Joe is skilled at doing surveys, but I'm not sure anybody is prepared for what kind of the current mood, political mood of answering survey questions and that kind of stuff. I mean, I don't know anybody who could.
Yeah, I guess. I'm just wondering if like, if we, like, if this is our methodology, and that's it, regardless of what we get, this is the information we're gonna have, or if there was a date we recommended, if we had to like change. I'm guessing after the third is too late, based on the calendar, to kind of do another survey and kind of shoot. So I'm assuming this is our one methodology, most likely?
That's the plan for the survey, yeah.
I'm not saying it's wrong, I'm just, in my head, just trying to play it out if you didn't get it right.
And, and the January twenty-fifth is a, that's again, by statute, at seventy days prior to the election, you know, backwards. But, yeah, I share your anxiety with, you know, like you said, just, I, ask anybody, my method is slow. You know, slow and intentional is the best way. You know, in my opinion, to give one shot at it, you don't want to have to do this again, it's an awful lot of investment by everyone involved. So, but at least I still feel good, we're proceeding, and we don't have to make a decision for over a month yet.
So much time.
Yeah.
Okay.
So this isn't work, we have to put in PTO time, but run your schedules. You don't get PTO. It's like the tooth fairy.
Okay, is there anything else we need to cover? I guess everything that's settled for the meeting tonight.
But, so, we're gonna get the survey done. I mean, that's supposed to give us some indication of the will of the electorate here, right? I mean, that's what we're doing that for.
Yes.
Correct.
And then based upon that, we're gonna be able to digest that and make a determination about whether we're gonna vote.
I, I think that the two things that we'd be looking at is are, are they willing to support it? And maybe the more important question is if they're willing to support it, how much are they willing to support it financially?
That'll hold a lot of weight, I think, in the decision-making process. But like, the admin team, we, right, we're sitting there, we're discussing what should we do, and then we say, well, let's ask, let's survey. We survey students and staff a lot. More times than not, our thoughts are validated, but there have been times where we're really surprised, and we feel no one till you ask.
Well, I gave my opinion for, I hate surveys. I hate, you know, so.
Would you just, I'm tired of you not telling us how you're really.
I know.
I'd be too honest with you.
Yeah. You can't like touch the chain of cars when somebody asks you to take a survey. You know, like, you can't buy coffee without somebody like, would you like to take a survey? Oh my god.
No, no.
So, so what does it have to pass by, one vote?
Yeah.
One vote, just majority?
Sure.
Yep.
And if those votes don't mean anything, then ask the school district to see.
What else is another, right? What else?
Million-dollar, over, that override last spring, passed by five votes. The opposition was upset, called for a recount. The recount passed by four. Allen reported for six months, and last part of the census, election, decided it by four votes. There are people not happy with it, but.
And there's a process, so I am the keeper of the ballot. So I appoint people to help watch the count, and they're usually the office staff. But it's a public meeting, people can come in. And basically, what we do is we get, we have ten municipalities in our school district, and we get the raw data from the municipalities that have been checked, been double-checked, been triple-checked. And then we write them down, consolidate them, verify, you know, who won the election, or if it passed or didn't pass.
Does anybody know what's on the spring ballot other than school board election? Hold on.
I'll do the spring, I don't think there's any that, only board members I think are. I was coming out, it's a partisan. But it's inside, yeah. And also the local council.
Turnout, this, obviously November would have been the best. I see, um, chances of passing a referendum greater, or greater turnout.
That was the best turnout I think historically, right?
Yeah. For all those reasons.
It was, it was a long day.
Week, day, week, month, whatever.
I worked, I worked the entire poll. I didn't have anybody shooting that. Okay, is there anything else we need to cover? Any other questions? In regards to the, the community meetings.
Is there other stuff that, I mean, do people know that this is being considered in the greater public?
Not, not everybody.
I think if you have, if you have kids in school or kids in athletics, you're aware of that.
Yeah.
Outside of that, no. And then I think, I think it's starting to make its way through some social media things. Portions of it, not all of it.
All the true, all the true parts, I'm sure.
Uh, there's stuff out there, I mean, sometimes.
Ants.
Yeah, I mean, generally that spreads faster than anything.
Yeah.
Okay, I don't need to take it any more time, it's just, thank you, that's helpful.
Okay, there is nothing else then to discuss on that point. We'll move on to the next item. This is our annual notice to the board. The automatic rollover provision of the administrative contract, you know, 2021, 2022.
Yeah, as required annually, uh, just wanted to get a notice that each administrator will receive a one-year contract extension on their current contracts, which are two years, unless the board notifies the administrator in writing prior to January 30th, 31st, 2021, of its intent not to do so.
So we've got to notify.
Just, sorry, I didn't mean to catch that. Everybody has a two-year contract, we're doing an extension.
Yeah, so July 1st.
Yeah.
Uh, to June 30th, two, for two years.
Yeah.
And then now, and halfway through this first year, is our contract extension is.
So there's still two years.
Correct. So two, yeah.
Two years, unless we notify them that we aren't going to remove which time they would have.
Looks like a roll one.
Correct.
Right.
State statute, because of the thickness of boards to protect administrators requires a two-year contract. Unless we do what we've done, which says, hey, we're not gonna renew you a year. We've actually done that before, we have administrators who say, hey, look for another job. But we, we set it up that administrators have to give us notice because we wouldn't remember and then they would just automatically move. So we have them give us notice in December. So in January, the board could take action to say, hey, no, we're not gonna roll. I'm just.
Clear, Brian?
Yeah, I just, that's what I thought I would send to them, like, I didn't want to assume that I was, that's what I was hearing. So it's like the rookie contract extension.
And then they can.
Got a franchise.
Franchise player.
I'd take, I'd take a one-year of those.
Okay. Okay, then moving on to the next item, discussion of financial impact of operational and capital projects referendum. So.
All right, Mr. Brian Brewer has been waiting patiently. Jen, I believe, is also on. Jen or Brian, which one of you would like to kick in?
Good evening. Jen, are you, you gonna, you wanna kick off and then I can go or?
You can go ahead, Brian.
All right. Uh, good to see everyone. Um, I've been listening to the conversation, uh, you know, about the information you're consuming. I have more information tonight. Um, it's generally good information, but again, it's, you know, there's a lot of details going into making sure that we fit the pieces of the future financial picture together the right way for the taxpayers and the, and the students in the district. Um, so your items are listed, you know, A and B, uh, financial impact of operational and capital project referendum and then, then the refinancing. Is it okay if I organize the refinancing to set up the, um, operational discussion?
Yes.
Okay, and then am I able to share my screen?
Yes, you are. Yep, it's on the bottom right, says present now. And then once you click that, you gotta actually click your entire screen.
Did that work?
No, so, no, not yet. So you hit presenting, then hit your entire screen. And then I think you gotta double-click on that window that opens up. So, yeah, so let me do it, just let me do it once, Brian. Yeah, so you hit present now and then your screen, uh, will, will pop up a little shirt. You have to click actually on yourself and then hit share. Perfect, uh, I see it. My sock there.
So you seeing the agenda?
It's showing up in a little window icon.
I'm able to see it here.
Yeah, we can here. Anyone?
Waffle?
Oh, I got, I'm ready to. There we go, we got it.
Okay. So the agenda for this, this evening, I wanted to walk through an update of interest rates. Um, you know, as you, as you, many of you on the board that have been on the board for a number of years, you, you know that in the prior decade, as you've implemented some prior referendum authorities and, and borrowing, pay for those authorities, um, you've taken advantage of very good and continually improving interest rate environments. Um, the, uh, this visual is the visual that I use with the board and I've used over, over that 10 to 15-year period. Um, this is the latest version of it. It's the last 30 years of the 20-year tax-exempt municipal bond rate. And it's, it's really, I use it to show that the trend has continued lower, um, for the past 30 years. And the call-out box shows just the 2020 movement in this rate. And it highlights that, um, earlier this year, we set an all-time low in, in this context. Um, and rates, you know, moved higher leading into the election and then elections have moved back lower to almost back to the, the all-time lows at this point. So that's a backdrop for the conversations that, that Tim and Jen and I have had related to your, your outstanding, um, debt picture. Uh, this, this visual shows, uh, your referendum approved debt. That is, uh, you have an issue that you made a prepayment on from 2012. You have two issues in 2015. And then you have a, a final payment that happens this spring, you know, on the 2016 issue. So one thing you'll notice in these obols is that the interest rates are all, uh, below three and a half percent. So, you know, relative to what we had communicated during the referendum, we, we always, um, use a conservative planning rate. And each of those times, we've come in significantly under what we estimated, which is, has allowed you to continue levying to, to pay down this debt. And, um, and so the, the conversation tonight is, um, where you, you have potentially have two actions at your January 11th meeting, uh, to consider refinancing the 2025 issue that is, that can be paid off on March 1. And then the sep, the separate issue is, uh, looking at refinancing the two issues from 2015 that can be refinanced as of March 1 of 2023. And so I'll show you the, the visual of that. But these are the ones that currently generate savings that would warrant refinancing and restructuring and, and the target for using the funds, levying to prepaid debt. Ultimately, we're looking at your total debt payments and, um, trying to, uh, get, structure those payments to position the district for your, your overall funding strategies that you've been discussing. Uh, on Friday, we talked to staff, this morning we talked to the task force. Um, and we've been prepping and planning, uh, to, uh, identify how you can layer in the operational revenue increase and the facilities referendum, uh, funding, such that you can minimize the additional increase over what taxpayers are currently paying in the, in the 2020, 21 school year. This final debt issue is Fund 38. This is the energy efficiency debt, so very low interest rates from two to three percent. Um, this one, it, it would, because of how low those rates are, uh, we, we're opting to wait on this one and monitor it throughout 2021, uh, to see if we can get close, closer to the payoff date of March of 2022, uh, to generate more savings, to make it more worthwhile, um, especially in light of the overall, um, planning that the, that the district is looking into for, uh, spring referendum. So in detail, the 2020, uh, the 2012 issue, I'm assuming here, as you work your way from the left side, this is what you're currently paying at two and a half percent. After the, the refinancing and prepayment, the, uh, maturities from 2022 through 2025 will be completely replaced by new maturities. Um, in an issue that, uh, so you're refinancing about, uh, 2.8 million and the new financing is about a million. And the reason for that is we're using a million eight of the funds that have been levied to pay down debt. We're using that to, to make the prepayment on this issue. Ultimately, the goal is this column, um, the second one from the right, where you have your actual levy that's approximately 4.4 million. We're, we're structuring to step down in that levy to, to right around 2 million. And then in those four years, so that as you're layering in the two funding, the two potential spring referendum funding initiatives, you would have capacity within the levy to offset, uh, the increase related to new funding initiatives. So that's a half a million dollar, 460 to 500,000 dollar reduction in the previous debt payments. And from a aggregate savings, it's about 130,000 of avoided interest costs. And the other benefit that doesn't really show on this page, but when you make a payment of a million eight, um, it's treated for state aid reimbursement purposes, uh, which in this current year, you're reimbursed at 32% for all additional expenditures. Uh, so you would receive that aid benefit heading into the 2021, 22 school year. Yeah? So it's partly lowering the rate, but it's partly making a prepayment to create room for the additional funding. Okay? So then if we look at the 2015 issue, um, again, you have two issues, March and May, rates range from 2% up to three and a half percent. In this case, we're, we're replacing the entire, uh, 20, uh, the March issue. And then we're, we're currently, and this depends on interest rates, but we're leaving a couple of maturities that are at a two and a two and a half percent rate because they don't currently generate enough savings to keep refinancing. Right now, this illustration is assuming 25 basis points, so a quarter of a percent over what you can currently get in the market because we have a month of time between now and locking it in. So using that 25 basis points, we're currently estimating a 215 for the new borrowing rate. Um, so right now, taking that a different way, if we could lock this in tonight, we'd be locking in a 1.9, which would then increase your savings, uh, using this interest sensitivity table in the lower left side of the screen. Um, right now, we're, we're you, it's projecting 700,000 of present value savings. Uh, if we're a quarter point lower, you know, that saves over a million on a present value basis. So relatively sensitive to interest rate movement. Um, but again, here again, the overriding goal is to use this refinancing to position the new, uh, forward-looking debt levies in a way that would accommodate the new, uh, spring funding. One of the conversations that came up on the staff call was, well, you know, would it drop? Would the debt levy drop if, if you don't approve, uh, either of the referendum, uh, funding initiatives? And, um, you know, I can't speak for the board, but, you know, in talking to a couple of individual board members and, and, and looking at what you've been doing in recent years to manage the total school mill rate, to position the district to make these prepayments on debt and save this interest costs. Um, you know, I, I think you would keep your, your debt levy the same. You know, even though we created the room, you'd keep your debt levy the same and use that additional to pay off a portion of this 2.4 million, such that as future funding initiatives, uh, are continued to be evaluated and discussed, you would be in an even better position as you, each year you move forward. So, um, so that's how we, that's that conversation that, you know, the expectation would be that if there wasn't, um, uh, a, a funding approved for either of the two initiatives, um, you wouldn't necessarily see a reduction in the debt levy portion because it's, frankly, it's been a reason that you are in a situation where this board has proactively looked, worked with Jen and Tim to look over a multi-year period, uh, and, and think ahead to position the district for what may be coming down the road. So this, the savings in this page look a little weird in that we have 100,000 dollar savings in some years, negative savings in some years, and then smaller amount. Ultimately, the guiding principle for this refinancing was structuring the few, leveling out the future annual payments. You have a, uh, platform to build the, you know, future spring referendum levies on. The other thing that is unique about this financing, and it has to do with federal tax law, so I'm not gonna get too deep into the weeds unless you would like me to. Um, but because the 15 bonds aren't callable for another year in twen, or sorry, two years in 2023, um, federal tax law requires that this refinancing start as a taxable loan. So the, the lender can't take it, uh, can't take the income and write it off for federal tax purposes. So they, they're gonna expect a higher rate of return for those first two years. Well, um, we've identified some bank purchasers that are in this environment. They're willing to block the taxable loan and the tax-exempt loan rates, such that when you are able to, according to, uh, federal regulation, opt to change your rates from the taxable to the tax-exempt, it would convert. So this is based on. So this is based on that conversion. If it if we didn't have that conversion, um, the taxable rates would be higher and your savings would be lower. So so that's a nice feature of having that ability to lock in your tax exempt rate today. Along with the taxable rate with you, you know, with your option to to convert. The other nice thing about this structure is that with a bank purchaser, unlike the bond market, uh where we pick a date up in the future and the bonds are called at that future date. Um, with a bank loan, uh there, these bonds are callable with a 30-day notice. So let's say you agree to the tax exempt rates and rates a two years from now stay the same or or lower. You would have the option to replace these rates with the then current uh tax exempt rates. So I like the burden concept of this, it it allows you to lock in, position your debt payments to absorb the spring referendum initiatives. And then have the wait and see option of what the tax exempt conversion rate is versus um what the market may be two years from now. Okay. Well, between those two items, that that the the prepayment, the refinancing tax exempt and the refinancing uh conversable conversion from taxes, tax exempt, you're you're over over 900,000 dollars of interest cost avoidance. So tentative timeline, if if you would like to receive uh discussion this evening. Uh, we would prepare agenda language uh with Tim and Jen uh and legal counsel. For uh action on final rates at your meeting on January 11th. Closing would be at the end of January with the payoff date of the 2012 bonds on March 1. So any questions on that before I toggle into the how how this these adjustments um impact the uh two funding initiatives for the spring? No, uh, anybody else have any question?
Oh, good. Howard's my question on how you handle the uh the callable bonds in 2023, and I'd like you to explain that, Brian.
Yeah, so that 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 is treated with an escrow account, so the funds will go in in this in January into an escrow. They're invested in a US Treasury until 2023, and then they're paid off. And then during that time period, um, is when you have that conversion option.
Another question for Brian, I think.
Okay, so if, you know, I I know some of you have heard this before, um, so I'll move relatively quickly through. Um, plus you've been living it as well. Um, but this is the types of material that that we shared with the uh staff on Friday and then the task force earlier this evening. Um, so I tried to organize the the two different funding initiatives. You know, one being titled the operational revenue increase referendum. So it's an increase in the operational revenue in order to fund the increase of sta- the staff compensation package. To target that 10% of the 12 area comparison group. Um, and then there's separately, there's uh the facilities referendum funding, which is focused on authorizing an amount not to exceed uh 20 million dollars of municipal bonds to pay for capital projects at elementary and high school campuses. Um, all state statute requires that we treat these two items separately on a ballot. Um, we look at them together in turn in, you know, in terms of your total school budget and and the impact um on the total school tax levy relative to what taxpayers are currently paying in this 2020 21 school year. So assumptions, uh, I highlight what we just talked about, that you you as a board have actively levied to to repay your prior referendum debt. You've refinanced where you can to reduce interest costs uh and lock in state aid uh on the on the prior debt payments, and ultimately those actions uh position the district in a stronger financial way for uh, you know, future budget years. Um, highlighting that the debt is fully retired um in 2035. The current debt levy for 2021 is 4.4 million. And that your state aid reimbursement on new referendum approved expenditures is third 32% of each, so 32 cents on each debt of of additional expenditure. We just talked about the savings from the refinancing being over 900,000 dollars currently. And uh, which will allow you to lower your required minimum debt service levy for 2022 by 2.3 million. So that 2.3 million reduction is offsetting a portion of the increase that would be authorized by the operational revenue referendum and the facilities referendum. So question one, a focus on the operational revenue increase for staff at the 110% target. In the future, that question would would require 2.1 million of an increase to the revenue limit in year one, and then step increases from year two through year 10 of an average of 370,000 each year. Ultimately, when you get to year 10, you've you, the question stops increasing and just remains in the budget in year 11 and thereafter at that funding level. So if if after year 10, that doesn't allow the board at that to maintain that 110% funding level. Uh, a future question about what the options are available uh in school finance would have to be had, and one of those options could sort of mean that there would need to be a a contin- you know, a a separate referendum in that 10th year to continue the the average step increase in the future years. Uh, question two would be the borrowing uh for capital projects at the elementary and high school campuses. Um, the illustration we use is an amount not to exceed 20 million. Uh, repaid over 20 years from the year that the district is able to access the market to borrow it. Currently, we're being conservative with our planning rates in these illustrations like we we have in the past. Uh, we're using 3.25 to 3 and a half percent for the 20-year borrowing. Right now, in the current market, districts that are received voter approval in November are locking in rates closer to two and a quarter for 20-year financing. So if rates hold and you're able to lock in roughly 1% lower than what we're using for planning rate. That would translate into 3 and a half million dollars of reduced interest costs during that 20-year payment. Um, and because it's so low and we're trying to balance the the two funding initiatives with the overriding goal of minimizing the increase over the current levy. We're structuring the majority of this 20 million, the principal of this 20 million after the retirement of the current debt. And so the majority of that that principal payment will occur from 2036 through 2042. And I'll show you a visual of that here in a second. So this is um a a bar chart of the referendum approved levies and and the annual debt levy. And so the black portion of the bar is represents what you have built into this year's levy. And what after refinancing and restructuring, your future levies look like. The blue portion of the bar is layering in that year one through 10 of what's required for the 110% operational uh revenue referendum. And we've structured it such that you would manage your your annual debt to minim- you know, to manage the uh total school tax levy. Um, to a- arrive at an increase related to uh question one of 87 cents per thousand dollars of property value. So saying it a different way, every 100,000 dollars of property that a taxpayer this this question would add 87 dollars to to be able to fund that staff compensation at the 110% target.
Brian, this is Jeff. I just want you to highlight for the board all of the stuff that you were talking about before in terms of refinancing and restructuring. We've created about, I mean, if you just took 21 22. We've created about a buck fifty per hundred thousand that of capacity that basically there's no tax, current tax levy. Cause we went that one 350 to five bucks, 531, almost a buck eighty. That we've created to make room for this, so the tax impact of this referendum would be that much less had we not been doing some of the things we've been doing over the last number of years.
That that is correct, and you've been paying down and saving interest costs. The dollars of interest costs on the already authorized referendum debt. So, you know, it it's it's both near term, the savings for the current taxpayers, and it's long term, which is positioning the district to have capacity with the tax structure of the district to fund um one or both of these initiatives. Uh, and have the first, like you said, roughly dollar, dollar fifty offset, or eighty offset.
So one of the questions, one of the questions that came up during the task group is let's just keep our levy at 531. And what, how much does that give us extra for compensation for question one? And the question that you'll have to answer, and we'll leave you open, Jen, of course. Uh, you know, is that 100%? Is it, you know, does that get us uh anything to increase teacher compensation? That that's for another day, but that's a question that was asked, and I think we have to have the answer to. And we can, I think Jen's already run numbers, and how much does if we just move to 100% of the average or 105%? You know, you have that spreadsheet from Jen, right, Brian?
Yes, and and I did, we we were running uh ranges. And and so, but we were focused on trying to get the 110% ready for these discussions so that they could be, you know, part of the staff co- call and the task force. So I, while you were in your groups this evening, I was also looking at that. There, it doesn't, if if that's what the caller's question was, like no increase over the 531. It doesn't get all the way to 100% with, based on the numbers Jen had sent. Um, but you can be awfully close to that. You know, I I'd need a little bit more time to circle back, but uh it looked like we could be under 20 cents of an increase for um uh the the 100% funding.
Okay. Initiative. Need to do, the task group will hear it and see what their reaction to it, that's information that we need to provide to them sooner or later.
Yeah, we can run that specifically tomorrow based on the 100. And then we would just back into what it would take to get like uh, Jen, we could tell you what what numbers fit into the 531, like the no increase. And then you would have to run that in your model to see what percent that gets us.
Sure, yeah.
I think it what's important for the board to recognize, and hopefully the community, is the fiscal discipline that the district has taken over the, you know, last of the years that you've been helping us, you know, so that we are in a position. Otherwise, we'd be looking at a, you know, freedom of increase in levy that just wouldn't be possible.
I understand your point, what you just said. That could be a lot clearer and a lot less cumbersome to get that point across. It said this is going to be shared, that is way more important than what you said. That's the important part. And it's, I mean, that was a little too much to get that point, I mean, to the extent that this is going to be shared.
Yeah. So I'll volunteer to translate Baird into English.
Remember, I'm bound to tell you the detail. We can move it to the high level, I can summarize with the best of them, but I wanted to give you all the detail first.
Ryan, I would have a question for you as regards to the uh facilities end of it. Um, you had an estimate based on 20 million dollars. What's what's the financial impact of uh per million for every uh million you would exceed that, what's what would be the financial impact?
So Howard, you're 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 solving for if you you just for each amount over the 20 million up to the 26 max that that said logic laid out?
Yeah, or 25.
Um, so this is the of of the the 20 million later than.
Right, 37 by 20, and that gives you the cost per million?
Yes, I ran it, um, the 26 million, it it roughly adds another 20 cents to the, you you know, you using the same structuring assumption. It adds about 20 cents for the 6 million. So every million is roughly, you know, what, 3 cents or so?
Okay.
So 30, 40 cents, every million a price of 30 or 40 cents?
No. 3 cents.
3 cents, yeah. It was how much for another 6 million, Brian?
6 million, was it, the estimate was a an additional 20 cents? And so, you know, like 21 million would take you from the dollar 37, it would take you to a dollar 40. Um, you know, 22 million takes you to a dollar 43, you know, roughly, again, I'd have to test this, but but just keep it easy. Um. You know.
So it's probably 3 cents a thousand for every million?
For every million over 20 million, correct?
Thank you for that. Okay. Any more questions for Brian at this point?
Brian, the action then, your first part of your presentation asked us, do we want to do all the refinancing and stuff that you would bring back in January? This stuff, it just what the committee is working on, task group is seen in terms of the impact on the levy, assuming that the board has already taken the actions you're going to recommend in January. Correct?
Correct.
So this, these referendum charts assume that we've taken the refinancing that you suggested earlier. Cause it's, I mean, why wouldn't we save a million dollars in interest? We wouldn't have thought of it without your help. Good. I think it'll be nice to have you on, run run the numbers in 100%, 105, 110, so you got those two somewhere. Capital, you know, common I mean, that's 20, 20, 23 and 26 or something like that. Then you kind of have a menu, right, for folks to reach this. Cause it, cause really the limiting factor is going to be the tax impact and what tolerance will be. Cause if it doesn't pass, what's the point? So hopefully the survey will determine tolerance, and then we can have a menu and choose from different options. Keep in mind.
So the uh, the graph here, here's 11 through 20 in this room. 35, 36, 42, the blue bar. the blue bars still represent question one.
Correct.
Because the levy continues, which just doesn't increase three hundred or four hundred thousand a year. So that, we take the black bar off because that's paid off and it just lowers that. Yeah, and then we're offsetting, we've delayed payments on the capital portions of the bill because of depreciation and assuming. But then in year forty-three, how do you offset that blue bar?
We have to get past another referendum.
No, the blue bar stays forever because it's a continuing, but it never increases. And you see it was increasing over the first ten years. So it's locked in. That's the most we will ever get. If we want, if, if the budget requires an extra three or four hundred thousand dollars a year to maintain the hundred and ten percent, we'd have to do another excess levy. Tim has promised that over ten years, he's going to bake that into our annual budget. So we don't need the referendum. Jen, yeah, he's applauding one of our lives a little bit there. I've promised that. But that's, that's what you would hope, that over that, the state would figure out state funding so that we aren't below average. We could fund some of that increase out going back to an excess levy.
So that blue bar in forty-two, forty-three just becomes a fixed cost inside of a different budget. So anything we do beyond that point goes on top of it.
We levy that in perpetuity. It's baked into our levy total.
But so then if you ever want to do a new building or structure or whatever it is, everything takes off from the blue bar. Right? It never, this doesn't happen.
Okay. Are there any other questions?
Just the only thing, so when the, the ten years is up, we have no capacity to, in our current model, we'd have no capacity to stay up with the, the hundred and ten percent. Wouldn't have any budget to do that.
Right. Or, or do another project without going above that rate?
Well, we can't do any project, you can't do any capital spending with any of that money.
No, I just mean if you do a capital project in thirty-six, it would develop a bar up. Above the purple, right?
The other thing, just so you know, is that that's a cap that the board can't levy over. Hudson does not levy to its capacity. So it has about four million dollars a year that they don't levy. They don't levy up to their total debt, their limit. So, you know, Hudson presumably could do what we're trying to do without a referendum just by the board at the end. But so just because you say you're, it's, have the capacity, doesn't mean you have to levy.
So are there any other questions for Brian? So I guess at this point, what do you need from us, Brian?
I think tonight was more discussion than if there was any objections to the, the actions coming to you for consideration on, on the, the eleventh. You know, it'd be good to know now because between now and then, we would be setting in motion, getting things finalized and rates available in resolution for your action that, that evening.
I guess I don't see any objections at this point for the refinancing. What's, what's, anybody else have any opinions on that?
Should we take a survey?
I was going to say, I was going to give a motion with approval.
Well, if you want, we could put it in a motion to proceed.
Do we have to or is that?
We don't have to.
Let's just bring it.
Okay.
We'll pass it.
So let's proceed with the refinancing, the options that we have, Brian, if you get the documents. So in order, we'll bring it back to discretion and possible, possible approval on the eleventh or January level meeting. If that's acceptable.
Okay, and then I'll be working with Jen to run those other updates that came out of the task force discussion. So that's, that'll be a tomorrow thing.
Okay. Sounds good. Okay, thank you, Brian.
Thank you.
Good evening. You're welcome. Bye.
Okay. So with that, we will move on to the next item on the agenda, which is approval of the second reading for policy three forty-two point six one, school aid program.
There were no edits from the first reading?
So with no changes, I would entertain a motion to approve policy three forty-two point six one, school aid program.
So moved.
Second.
Yeah, motion, Kirk, second, the end. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is consideration of approval of second reading of board policy four twenty-two point one, admission of foreign exchange program students.
Jen, highlight the portion, so we edit and, you know, I want a little, some language on discretion if that's included.
Okay.
So moved, second.
Okay, a motion at the end, second, Brian, to approve policy four twenty-two point one. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Okay, the next item on the agenda is consideration for the board treasurer to approve post-board meeting invoices for the rest of December. Since we are at least a week earlier than we normally run, typically we'll allow Scott to come in, approve invoices on our behalf. And the board will come back in January to have some approval on those.
So moved, second.
Okay, a motion at the end, second, Brian. Approve board treasurer, come in, approve post-board meeting invoices for December twenty twenty. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Next is just a reminder of what we discussed earlier. Just contact Pam if you're interested in registering for the state convention. We have the upcoming dates, important dates listed. If you could read those at this point. I don't know if there's anybody else interested in those. Hopefully they can see those. Then the next item on the agenda is to convene in closed session for Wisconsin State Statute nineteen eighty-five one C for consideration of employment, promotion, compensation or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility. Two items to be covered are the staff performance update. And the second is the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one superintendent's quarterly goals review. Okay. We have a motion going in closed session. By a second.
Second.
A motion, Kirk, second. Jeff, you go into closed session, hold all votes. Kirk, aye.
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 Good. And so Scott and David are not present. We've ordered to go into closed session. With that, let's take a two-minute recess and then we'll come back in closed session.